And we still are receiving fifteen thousand three hundred and forty-eight dollars in Title I towards the reading specialist. And the ninety-four one forty-two, which was the, which is the federal IDA, provides twelve thousand one hundred and ninety-three dollars in speech services. So our school choice protection, our school choice students make up approximately twenty percent of our student population. We had thirty-seven students out of one hundred and eighty-six as of our October first census. For FY fourteen, our beginning balance and revenue projections were exceeded by fifty-nine thousand two hundred and forty-three dollars. However, we also had some unplanned expenditures. We needed to add two instructional assistants for new students who required them in their IEP. We also needed to add a kindergarten aide for the new kindergarten class, and we needed to add expenses for a language-based learning disability specialist for services that were prescribed in IEPs. These additional expenses totaled sixty-one thousand three hundred and twenty-eight, which leaves our estimated balance, ending balance short by two thousand eighty-five dollars. For FY fifteen, our projected beginning balance is fifty-four thousand one hundred and twelve, with added estimated revenue of two hundred and sixty thousand two hundred and ten dollars per the preliminary school choice report. That's money for thirty-eight students at five thousand dollars each and a sped increment of seventy thousand two-ten. Our planned expenditures for this account would be three teacher salaries at a hundred and forty-eight four ninety-seven, five instructional assistants at a hundred and one thousand three seventeen, a point-one FTE for a strings program in the amount of six thousand five fifty-two, a point-two FTE for Spanish instruction in the amount of twelve thousand seven twenty, and fifteen thousand six hundred and twenty-five dollars for sped programming for summer needs. This totals two hundred and eighty-four thousand seven hundred and eleven dollars, which will leave us a projected ending balance of twenty-nine thousand six hundred and eleven in school choice. The expenditure projection has changed from the original projection by a total of twenty-seven thousand five ninety-four. The additional expenditure is the net effect of adding one teaching position estimated at a master step eight, which equals fifty thousand one twenty-seven, and the elimination of one instructional assistant at a rate of twenty-two thousand five thirty-three. The reasoning for adding the teaching position is to either utilize it to reduce the size of next year's sixth grade, or to reduce the size of the incoming kindergarten class, which is still up in the air at this point. Our circuit breaker projection, for FY fifteen, we're not projecting any revenue, and this is a decrease from FY fourteen of seventy-seven thousand nine hundred and twenty-four. Our circuit breaker funding is undergoing changes because we're sending less kids out into seven sixty-six placements, and we are educating them in the classroom. Just to give you an example, in FY thirteen, we had to expend two hundred and twenty-five thousand four hundred and thirty-six dollars in out-of-district placements in order to generate the seventy-seven thousand nine hundred and twenty-four in revenue. In the year previous, we were able to generate approximately ninety thousand in revenue by expending two hundred and thirty-nine. With the creation of the Horizons program, we are able to provide programming for our students at a cost of approximately a hundred and fifty-one thousand six twenty-four while generating revenue to support some of the services provided in the program by tuitioning in kids from other union districts. Our beginning balance in the circuit breaker is projected to be thirty-five sixty, and because of this low projection, we're not, we're gonna await the actual figures before projecting any expenditures. But in FY fourteen, this account was able to fund the Horizon teacher and aides that were in that classroom. I did also bring for you tonight some information on Sunderland's school choice and charter information. We presented this to the school committee. We thought you might be interested in it.
Thanks so much, Ben.
Principal's office heat. Can we just shut that off?
We have a new system. We should be able to hit that zone. It shouldn't be in the office, anyway.
He's doing layups in there anyway. So the, as you can see on the first page of this report, in the, our final reporting of fiscal year thirteen, we had school choice sending, we had twenty students, and so far, reporting in December of fourteen, we only have seventeen, so we're down three students. So our school choice sending tuition is projected to go down by twenty-three thousand eight ninety-five, difference between the ninety-eight thousand one sixty for this year and the one twenty-two fifty-five from last. So where are these seventeen students going? Well, as you can see, there are some in Conway and Deerfield and Whately, the other union schools, but there's also some in Gilmonague, three in Hadley, four in Hatfield, and Northampton. We also have two students going out to charter. One is at the Hilltown in grade two. For that student, we pay fifteen thousand thirteen dollars in tuition and a facility fee of eight ninety-three for a total of fifteen nine oh six. And we have one grade, fifth grader at the Pioneer Valley Chinese Immersion School. That tuition is eighteen thousand fifty-seven dollars a year, plus the facility fee of eight ninety-three for a total of eighteen five ninety. So if you add those two together, it comes to thirty-four thousand four ninety-six. When added to the school choice sending of ninety-eight thousand one sixty, that's a hundred and thirty-two thousand six hundred and fifty-six that we're paying for students that are charter and choicing out. And then the second page just gives you a breakdown by grade of where those students are.
One of the things, too, you know, I think people lose sight of is that we are charged for the actual cost of the education of those students at charter schools.
I was just headed there.
And it usually is surprising to people that it's as much as it is.
Right.
And it varies from school to school depending upon the school.
Well, I guess my question, they, I thought, didn't the state at one point, they kind of, it was a step program, or it has always been the full amount right off the bat? I thought it was kind of stepped, it was like so much the first year.
There is a percentage, yeah.
Yeah.
And it does go down with time.
Okay.
But if you're always having students going in, now Sunderland, yeah, only.
No, to me, it's just a ma-
But you're right. You're not charged with it the entire time at that rate.
And, and I just think, again, eighteen, eighteen thousand, and you really don't have a public oversight.
Correct.
I can guarantee the half dozen of us in this room are not gonna solve that problem.
And not that I'm opposed to charter schools, but I am opposed to the funding formula, so.
So back to our packet, the next page is detail the by-line budget for you. And then following that is a summary by department and the changes from one year to the next. Then the next page details the funding sources. So while we're asking the town to appropriate two million one forty-six nine eighty, that's eighty-four point sixty-three percent of the total program cost, which we're estimating to be two million five thirty-six seven ninety-two. We'll be using two hundred and eighty-four thousand seven hundred and eleven of school choice funds, which provides eleven point two-two percent. Other state and federal grants, twenty-seven thousand five forty-one or one point oh nine percent. The circuit breaker of thirty-five sixty, the early childhood tuitions of twenty thousand, and revenue from school lunch of about fifty-four thousand. Then the last page in the packet details all the different percentages based on Sunderland's enrollment. And what's further, not only is Sunderland going up, but all the other districts are going down, and that's why the percentage change is so heavy. That's why you're experiencing such a big change in your percentages, going from nineteen ten to twenty-one thirty-one for the union percentage, and also for the superintendent's office from twelve sixty-two to fourteen oh one.
But that's not reflected in our population. The population is actually going down.
Well, they're bringing more kids.
Well, it's issue, I'm just, just demographics, right? I mean, population, the town population, the last census, we're going down.
And I think that's true. But across the district, it varies widely.
Well, yeah, I thought when they looked at the next, the projected growth, going town and the district that was supposed to grow was Deerfield.
It's interesting, because that, you know, that reflects the demographic, you know, the demographic movement, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, Deerfield's actually going down.
I, I, yeah, it's just, it's just, it's amazing, 'cause you look at the published numbers, and then you look at what we actually see, and they're not, there seems to be a disconnect. It's interesting.
So Margaret also asked me to bring some information about the teacher retirements, which Marty had alluded to. We had submitted them as a separate warrant in the amount of eighty-three thousand two ninety. If we were to put those back in our budget, our budget would go up another three point nine nine percent, bringing the total change to six point nine three percent. And this is a cost for three teachers, and according to their contract, if the teacher has ten years of service, they, teachers who retire while employed by the district will be entitled to be paid for unused available sick days at the rate of two days for each full year of service, one day if they chose the longevity benefit. And none of these teachers did. In addition to getting paid two days for every year at their current rate, they're also entitled, if they've been here ten years, to a base payment of four thousand dollars, plus twenty dollars for each unused and available sick day, up to a maximum of a hundred and sixty, plus the current fifteen, which brings us up to one seventy-five, or a total of seventy-five hundred dollars. And their intent has to be filed by October first of the preceding year in order to get the benefits. So this year, we have one teacher from last year who did not give us notice, and two teachers that did give us notice timely. So one te, the, it breaks down that one teacher is getting about twenty-eight thousand two hundred and forty-five dollars, another's getting twenty-four thousand eight hundred and seventy-eight, and the third one's getting thirty thousand one hundred and sixty-seven dollars. So that totals the eighty-three thousand two ninety. And that is all I have for this year's presentation, if you have any questions. But before we go, I do want to give you an update about this year's budget. I don't know if you want me to do that now, or ask your questions, or?
Maybe the, this year's budget, if it feeds into the proposal. They linked it anyway.
Mainly a heads up.
Okay, mainly a heads up.
Yeah.
Oh, let's have the heads up first.
Okay. As we told you, you saw that for next year's budget, we are planning on, we had, we are planning on increasing the number of instructional assistants. Well, that hit us this year, and it's unbudgeted.
Okay.
So that, the four assistance totaled about seventy-two thousand five hundred and eighty-nine dollars. We're able to fund two out of the school choice fund, but the other two are running over budget in our local budget. Also, we had the unfortunate experience of losing our principal, and that caused us to have to pay out an unexpected twenty-three thousand ninety-six dollars in benefits that we had not planned on. So in total, we're over budget by like ninety-five thousand six hundred and eighty-five dollars. One of the things that we have done to try and remedy this is that we've applied to the state for foundation reserve aid in that amount to see if we can get some money for those unexpended costs. We should know by the end of February if we're gonna receive any funds. But in case we don't, we are watching our budget very tight, but because their salaries, it's hard. We're probably going to, if anybody does leave, our plan has been not to replace them from this point forward, but we just wanna put you on alert that our budget may be running a little bit over.
Margaret?
Is the school able to do appropriation transfers between line types? So for example, are you, does the school committee have the authorization to do appropriation transfers from expense to salary and vice versa?
I believe they have that authority. We would have to come with them. But most of our savings is usually in the heating account, so that's hard, because I have to wait, we have to wait to get through heating season to see if we're gonna have any savings there.
Right, right. I don't think you'd actually need school committee approval.
Yeah, just do those.
We would certainly inform them when it occurs.
Sure. Well, at first blush, first observation is I'd like to thank you for the quality of the information, right off the bat. I think that's, it's, it's well done. I like the narrative. And as someone who has been advocating for, you know, clear, quality information in years past, this is really a treat. So thanks so much for the work, the administration. Now for the numbers.
First till sweet tacos.
Well, I was talking to somebody-
It's almost Valentine's.
That's right. I was talking to somebody today, and they said, "Why do we even have these meetings? 'Cause it's just like going to the judge." Well, that's not true. And so we could have won the public, anyway. That said, this, this represents the perennial tension between available revenue and growth, and then, and then pressure on expense growth, both with programmatic growth as well as contractual growth. And you know that the town, and I'm gonna stop talking in a minute because I have to, the town has probably to the tune of between a hundred and twenty and a hundred and sixty thousand dollars of traditional growth. That is a combination of availability and the rate of two and a half, and then limited, as we know in the economy, limited new growth, that's new taxation, new recurring taxable assets. So as, as these numbers all come up, we understand, we understand the pressures to keep through your expenses and to keep the programs, and it's important to understand where, you know, we land on that, on that side. And it's, it's the annual discussion, so I do appreciate that. And with that said, I'm gonna delegate the rest of the talking, because I'm not very good at it right now. Any questions with regard to elementary? Finance committee?
I'm sorry.
Okay, Dave?
I'm just wondering, like, with the, with the retirement thing, if there's, if there's a better way in the law to do it rather than, 'cause we're certainly trying to figure out, oh, do we put it in the budget? Do we do it as a standalone? And I'm wondering, is there a way to sort of like, say, pick a five-year, for sake of argument, like, average and figure out roughly, over the last five years, we've had, you know, one point three teachers retire, and then somehow try to save for that as part of the budget, rather than, 'cause it seems like it would give us a little more stability in that respect.
Do you think you'd like a stabilization fund or something?
Well, sort of, like, maybe, I don't know. I'm just trying to think if there's a way, maybe, you know, say you average it out, and you know, there's like one point six teachers retiring, you figure out what that amount is on an average basis, 'cause that's all you can do, 'cause it does vary, obviously, from person to person. And then save that, and essentially, and then, you know, if you don't use it that year, you've rolled into stabilization, and then, I don't know if you could do this, but essentially set yourself a cap based on like the, over, you know, a longer period, what's the maximum number of people we've had retire in a year, and sort of set that as a cap threshold, and then beyond the cap, revert back to free cash.
It's, it may be, if I could follow up, Dave. That may be, that may be a business manager's question. Is there, is there a mechanism that's afforded either through DOR or DESEC guidelines that allows for encumbered funds for multiple years?
No.
And that's, that, I think, because we are largely cash-driven.
Yep. So we'd have to revert back every year, essentially, to-
I think the encumbering is the mechanism.
You can only encumber if they, technically, the way the contracts are written is sort of outside the realm of the way we're supposed to do it as well, but we, it's because we pay within thirty days, even if they don't notify of the fiscal year, we're, we're on shaky ground, but I think we can skirt through there. But the difficult part was, like, last year, we had none.
Right.
This year, we have three. Next year, no one's declared.
That's why I'm trying to think if there's a way to, like, kind of smooth that out, and help us plan.
This is a maximum year. I, this is very unusual, to have three in one year.
We've looked, it's been high of forty-something in years.
I think, yeah, I think the, the last highest year was a little over forty-four thousand dollars, and that was about three years ago, maybe.
And how many staff do you have, Ben? How many classroom teachers do you have?
There's ten classroom teachers.
So there's ten. We've just had three, and we've got thirteen between classroom teachers and other teachers in the building that are still moving on steps, so I would assume, like, those thirteen aren't gonna be retiring, 'cause they're younger, they're still moving on step. So I, I think that we're pretty much done for a couple of years right now.
Trying to think if you have anyone else.
Margaret, the town?
Well, we have, okay, so we have an immediate need to pay post-employment benefits for teachers. But last year at town meeting, the town established another post-employment benefits trust fund. And the town has not started funding it, like many, many other municipalities.
State.
We have not had, yeah, we've not had, we've not had the funds to, to, to look at funding that. But this is obviously an obligation the town needs to look at paying this year, but it might be, you know, might be advisable after this year, where we expect the, the cost to drop next year, to really start funding that, that OPEB trust fund and setting aside money so that we can begin to, to prepare to pay for, for future.
Would the OPEB cover this? Because isn't that usually just a projection for health insurance, retiree health insurance?
Well, it's not just, but it can be, but it can be other post-employment benefits for retirees. It's not just limited to health insurance, so.
But when you had your assessment done, did you include these type of benefits to have them?
Actuarial is probably not.
The actuarial assessment, I don't have the details on what was included in that, but I would be looking at, you know, I think we should be looking at broadening what a post-employment benefit for retirees would include, so I think we have to do that.
That's homework that we have on definition and mechanism.
And we, by the way, we know that we're spending about fifty-two thousand dollars a year on retiree health insurance right now.
And we see that only from a purely municipal budgeting perspective. We just see that in benefits and insurance. It just comes on and on and on. Tommy, you on the way in?
Um, well, we know we've had a change in management at the school, so there's a different way of doing business, and I guess probably there's humps that we have to get over. But I, I would say, we have had retirements in the past, and we've never had to go to the warrant article. A warrant article to pay for it. So, so at some point, we, we found money, or the school found money to pay for it. I don't know how that happened. I don't know, I'm not going back and asking how that was done, because that's revisionist history, but, so. But moving forward, I, I agree with what David said, but I don't think you'd have to encumber that money. I think at the end of the year, we could always put money, we can put money in a stabilization account pretty easy. I mean, you can't, you can't say just gonna go for this or that, but we can, we can put it there with a-
Stabilization.
We can put it there with a reasoning.
Right.
And, and the state be, you know, and the state, whatever they're gonna say. So I think we can do that without the encumbering, 'cause we would never be able to encumber.
Right.
I don't know if we can do it with what Margaret's saying, 'cause I, the way I understood, it was more for employee costs, not necessarily the payouts, that I think the school a little bit different than, there's no other, really, we don't have any other pay, we don't have payouts for any other town employees like that.
Not like this, no.
Well, no, but it would apply, it would apply to town employees, whether or not one employee has the same benefit as the other, so.
Right. But I mean, for us, I mean, we're paying vacation, and vacation is something that, that's already in the budget, so we're, we're doing it, so.
Pay as you go right now. That's what it is.
You're right.
So, so Scott, Scott started talking about revenue, and we talk about revenue, and, and I'm just gonna, I hope, I hope educators understand, I just, like, when I was in school, we learned how to round to get to where we needed to go. But rough numbers, schools about sixty percent of our budget, when we take out the sewer. Sewer's about sixty. We do two point one million elementary, about one point eight million frontier. So I'm gonna say thirty percent to frontier, thirty percent to the elementary, just for sake of arguments. We have probably total of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of, I'll say, new money coming in this year. So if I, if I was just looking at it, sixty percent of a hundred and fifty, say seventy thousand dollars, whatever, seventy-five thousand, new growth at frontier would be about thirty-five thousand, frontier'd be about thirty-five thousand.
Sixty percent of one fifty?
I, I'm, yeah. I know, it's, it's, it's a little, it's like eighty-five thousand.
More than seventy-five.
I, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just rounding.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So, all right, so say forty thousand, say fifty thousand, new growth, fifty thousand, say fifty thousand new growth. That's a lot different than what we're seeing.
That's high.
Right here. I guess that's my, my, a long way to say what we have. So, so I, and, and I guess, put the budget together, there's two parts to budget. There's a revenue side, and there's, and there's the expense side. And, and that's somehow, and I'm not even gonna mention the state side. And I, I think if you look at the state side, when I did my quick number before, I think Sunderland, when you look at new growth to Sunderland Elementary, it's like forty-five hundred dollars from the state, give or take twenty-five dollars, like forty-five hundred dollars. That's a pretty abysmal number, in my opinion. So somehow, so, so what do we do? Every year, it's the same thing. We sit here, looking at you guys, and we, we say the same thing, and yet there's, in my opinion, there's one part of the equation that's not picking up their fair, their fair share of what we're talking, and they leave us to, to have this discussion. And I'm, I'm personally tired of that, because I know what kind of work you guys are doing. And how can I say I know what kind of work you're doing? Because I look at this, okay? I look at this, and I see school choice going out, I see school choice coming in, and I go back four or five years and see what happened when we didn't fund elementary school. Right?
And I think that's what you see reflected on there. When the numbers were higher going out, when the programs were cut, the kids went. And past history has shown us, they don't come back.
No, they don't.
The ones that have left.
You're absolutely right.
So we're building up again, because we're building the programs up. So we're sort of damned if you do and damned if you don't. And I understand, you know, the bigger picture.
I, I, and when I look at it, and, and, and we had this discussion during that, that override question. And, and, and to me, it was like, it was an experiment on a grand scale, you know, there's, we were, they were, we were doing, you know, we kept saying, you, you know, you can cut the elementary school budget, but we're gonna end up, it's gonna end up costing more, and a lot of people didn't understand that.
Right.
Well, now you've got data to back it up. We had to wait a little while, but.
And taken, taken, what, four or five years to get back? These are the numbers, what you see on paper now, these are the numbers that we saw four or five years ago.
Two more to go.
And, and, and when I look at the numbers, I can still see the remnants of that outgoing.
Right.
And, and we, we can see it. And, and that's, and like you said, once you go, you're probably not gonna come back. But we know that.
Well, and they had more kids, so they went with those older kids, they had other kids that now came up, and they are gone, too, because they were already established over at another school. So they're not gonna, they're not gonna send their kids to two different elementary schools in the same district. You know, you're, you ended up making a choice, you left, and then now you've got two or three siblings now behind that are also, you know, it doesn't sound like a lot, but it shows up.
Sure does.
But it does, and we see it. So what am I saying? I, I agree with Scott. I like the transparency of, I don't say, I like the fact that it's transparent, I don't like Patty's numbers.
Patty, come up with some other numbers.
And, and I, and I thought accountants learnt a little bit in accounting school how to make the numbers look better than what they are, but at least she didn't use red ink this time.
That's right.
Ever.
And so I, sometimes, somehow, we're gonna have to sit down, and, and I think we have work to do on the budget, and I hope, and again, it's, it's not challenging what you guys put together, it's just looking at the realization of what we have in front of us, and, and somehow, we're gonna have to sit down and, and fight, you know, fight together so that we can still do things in towns and also do things, good things, for our kids.
Good comment.
Yeah, the touch base on what Scott said about the increase of expenses and the increase of school choice. I mean, we've been talking about this for years, how sometimes, you know, you're, you're estimating thirty-eight for next year, I mean, are we sure that's thirty-eight? I mean, what if it's thirty-one? That's thirty-five thousand dollars we're not gonna see, so, or maybe it's gonna be forty-five, and it'll be even better. So has there been a change of focus in terms of school choice, of actually going out and getting some, or are they just coming in by themselves?
We get the money on the lag, so we can.
It's last year.
Buffer a little bit.
We have a one-year buffer.
Right, so we can project for, we can project ahead for the year now, that it means it can make us for difficult choices subsequently if, if we trend reverses, or, you know, I mean, or there's a big, you know, all of a sudden, less coming, more going, or something like that. But right now, we're, you know, we're at, we're actually the one, some of the going out is tapering off from that, so we're actually still in. Verge was part of this cycle. Ultimately, you know, eventually that was kind of stable and out.
But are we actively?
I know what you're saying, and there's nothing wrong with going out and getting them. I don't, yeah, and I think that could be further developed. I'm, that's just my opinion. I'm not sure if everybody else feels that way, but.
Well, part of what we, we've discussed each year is where are we looking at in the kindergarten, coming in, projecting that, and which is, you know, a very difficult business. Um, and if we're at a certain threshold, it's like, well, that's already a big class. Let's just go for it and, and get, and try to get choice in and, and, and pay for another teacher as much, or, or as close as possible with that. Or, you know, it looks like we can have a manageable class size without that, and then let's, you know, no choice there. Let's keep it, you know, in a decent class size, and, and that decision is always really tough.
Right.
Are we maxed out in terms of class sizes and?
No. In fact, in the class sizes where there's two per grade, we do have some room. The struggle comes in, we never know what grades they're gonna apply for.
Right.
Uh, when you have a singleton, that's more difficult. For instance, right now, we have eighteen students that we're projecting for the incoming kindergarten. That's a little shaky because you start to get over, you know, twenty for kindergarten, then, then you're talking about adding another class. So then perhaps you do actively recruit for that particular grade so that you can fund that. So wherever you have two classes per grade, you have some room. Where you don't, you don't have as much flexibility.
We've had good, you know, we've had some good, a lot of good things happening and word gets out and, you know, we've been a combination school two years in a row, and those things are all, you know, they go a long way.
Parents look at that.
They look at all the test scores.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I have a follow-up. Sorry, I had a follow-up background question on that because I didn't grow up in Massachusetts, so I don't know how this works. The instructional aids, so we don't, we have some classes, sorry, some grades with two, two classrooms, some grades with just one?
Yes.
And then there's one of these, other than the IEPs, there's an aid per grade level. Is that normal or is it usually one per class? Like what, I'm not sure what these people do, sorry.
Depends on the grade.
Yeah, they're, they're, you know, teaching instructional assistants and honestly, it varies from school to school. Uh, Deerfield Elementary School, for example, has three classes per grade and two instructional assistants per grade. Um, and that's not including the one-on-ones, one-on-ones.
So, these are for regular education?
These are for regular education, yes.
So, the way we have it set up is kind of on par with the state? It's not unusual?
It's not necessarily a recommendation from the state, but I, I would say it's on par with the district.
Okay.
David?
One of, this is kind of more of a nuts and bolts thing, but we were talking about mentioning increases for cost and like copier leases. One of the things I'm wondering about is I'd rather see us spend money on teachers and stuff than like copiers. Is if we could look at bundling, you know, this across all the schools, the town even, and library. I mean, because there's an opportunity there to do like bulk leasing. I mean, we'd have to probably synchronize our lease schedules and stuff, but I gotta think that there's a way we can save some money there.
And we're all over the place. I've just started doming into this with, and every school is in a different spot with their leases.
Right.
Um, the other thing too, with the addition of our new technology director, um, once he gets his, you know, gets, uh, the lay of the land, one of the things I'm hoping to sit, sit down with him and say is, let's, as a district, look at our print services. Not just the copiers, but the printers in the classrooms. And, and that, that is the way to go is to, is to just, you know, combine both your print, all your print management systems, um, and do it district-wide for all five schools, and hopefully get some type of bargain.
Do you have separate printers as opposed to printer-copiers? Like, you're not all networked like that?
Some of them, some, some of them are networked, others aren't. It depends on the school. So, we're, what I, what, what, once, like I said, as I, as Mr. Paul gets, um, you know, gets his initial, uh, estimate of the district, his, uh, uh, his, whatever, his analysis of where we all are with our technology, um, getting the print service management, and what they'll do is they'll come in for free and assess and then give us a quote. So, that's what I wanna do is get someone to come in, go to all five schools, assess where we are, and then give us a proposal.
Does the state do that for schools or municipalities?
Wow. I would imagine there are state contracts for, I would imagine there are state contracts for, for these leases, yeah.
But do we, Margaret, do we, why, why wouldn't we be working with the schools to lease together?
Well, that's, that was my point.
It's a very good question, and a few years ago, we, um, the administrators and the towns had, um, had conversations with a former superintendent and business manager, and we started to talk about this, um. The discussions ended, but I, I'd be more than willing to talk with, with you Patty or your technology director to see how we might be able to work together on that.
Because if we don't take a step, we're always gonna be in this position where all leases are out of sync, and somehow, we just have to say, you know, we need to.
Right, everybody fights a bullet, stick together.
Expire, exactly, you know, maybe we can.
Well, you could actually help us.
Well, I agree.
Well, that's.
Everybody could.
We have a bigger contract and you could pick it back on.
Right, play more bulk.
Mark?
Couple of questions. And I enjoy the narrative too, and I know you're gonna think the hammer's gonna come down after I say that, but I really appreciate all the information. And it's not as a hammer, it's just asking questions to try to get knowledge. I got no questions.
It's that inner Irish girl going right there.
I had a question on retirement. In the narrative, you said two teachers retired, and in the warrant article, I think we're paying for three teachers.
One retired last year and she didn't give appropriate notice, so her retirement is due this year. But she retired last year.
She didn't give appropriate notice last. Okay, my next question would be, since this is now a warrant article, I, I don't think it's revisionist history to ask how it was funded in the past. How were retirements funded in the past? Because what if this is voted down at town meeting? This is a contractual requirement, right?
Right.
I, I think in the past, Mark.
Right, then what do you do?
Yeah, in the past, they've been relatively small. And so, it was included within the budget, and a twenty thousand dollar increase is much more easily absorbed than a ninety thousand dollar increase.
I also think that sometimes that, um, when, when school choice, when the school's choice first started, the money was used for supplemental rather than operational. Now, we're paying for more operational expenses. So, uh, my guess would be sometimes if they were large, they would use the money that was available in school choice to pay them out as well.
Okay. And my second question, since you put it in here, is what is so special about step fourteen, which makes it a five thousand dollar increase?
No, we don't know how that bubble, we don't know how that, you know, unfortunately, I've just been here a, a little under two years. Um, so I don't have the history of the, of the contract, but, um, I was discussing it with another district, and, um, one of the school committee people thinks that what happened was, at one point, we, um, gave the teachers like a pot of money and they distributed amongst themselves, and that they, you know, everybody at step thirteen gave that big bubble jump to the, to the next step because then you're sort of at fourteen till you get to, to year twenty. So, you're on that step for six years. So, there seemed to be a bubble there, and that's what another district thought that it might have.
Actually, I would, that's what, no, that's what happened at, we know that happened at frontier. Cause if you look at, if you look at the schedule.
Yep.
You will notice that, you would think that there's a, 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 a very consistent increase between steps. There isn't, and, and, and even in the frontier, when I did it eight, nine, ten years ago, there are some steps that are like, or there are some steps are like eight, nine percent, some steps are two percent, there's some that are eleven percent. So, it, it's very hap, if you look at the schedule, and, and it's not, and what was said is that they used to negotiate, they said there's a hundred thousand dollars, you, here's a hundred thousand dollars, you guys figure out where it goes. We don't do that no more.
And I think depending upon the age of the people who are doing the negotiation.
Yeah.
No, I'm serious.
There's not, there's not a lot of, there's not a, there's not a lot of new teachers and negotiations.
Correct. It's usually more.
So, I assume the warrant article will pass, but if it doesn't, for some crazy reason.
It would have to come out of the school budget.
Right.
Well.
Have to cover it.
Right, it would, it would, it'd have to come out of the school budget and/or they, they'd come back to us for, I mean, it's an obligation of the elementary school right now.
Are you saying, Tom, that if, if it doesn't get approved, then you want us to find that eighty-three thousand and make other cuts?
Well, no, I'm saying.
If it doesn't pass on the town.
Right.
Yeah.
You're saying we'd have to go back here and find eighty-three thousand dollars worth of cuts?
Or we have to work with you to find, or we have to find eighty-three thousand dollar cuts between us and you, yeah. If it doesn't pass, I mean, if we don't have it, or we have to find eighty-three thousand dollars somehow. I think, right? Right, we, we don't got a choice of not paying it, it's a con.
No, we don't have a choice of not paying it.
Yeah.
I think that's one of the, I guess, the risks in putting it as a standalone, is that you add a political element to it. And it could cause us to have to scramble from a budgetary standpoint. I, just stepping back, looking at it that way.
I would, I would think that town meeting, even in its town meeting mood, if, if that ends up being the mechanism of choice, that being that the warrant article mechanism, um, has demonstrated enough savvy over the last, certainly my tenure, to recognize that by putting it in the operating budget, the operating budget, it not only inflates, but it's a great way to bury future costs in the operating budget. And by pulling it out, you actually have a real vote on it.
There have been.
And we take it out because it's extraordinary.
Contractual obligations, so.
So, I think, I think, you know, we, we've had that conversation a number of years ago about, you know, managing the noise in escalations and declines in the operating budget, and we're embracing that transparency right now. So, by having it pulled out, it's easy to say, well, it's really simple. It's a warrant article because it would represent six percent, and next year you'd be going, what about those retirements? Right? How, did those actually come out? And then you go, oh geez, the budget's complex, and da, 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 da. So, I, I think, I think in a lot of ways, it, it, it's a mechanism if it, we end up going that way, that's as transparent as, as we can possibly make it.
And, and in, and in fact, when you, when you look at, when you look at the, when you look at the number.
Yep.
It, it's a very, it's a very interesting budget, because you'll see that your, when, when you, when you look at it, you have a forty thousand dollar decrease of, of, because of teachers that are leaving. Well, your, your increase in salary is forty-six thou, or forty-three thousand. So, when you look at both, there's steps, and COAs has really increased by eighty-three thousand.
That's right. Really great point.
Right? So, we, we see that, we probably couldn't, we, we've never, we've never had that answer before.
Correct.
So, those are the things that I look at and say, that's, that's a great thing to see in the budget because it makes it so we can understand what's actually happening. And a guy like Mark, who's in the past, has asked us how steps and COAs affects the budget. We've really never been able to have that discussion, but it's there now for us, so it's a good thing.
Mark, you wanted to weigh in?
Yeah, just one more question on the, uh, don't take it personally, Marty, on, on the increase in the superintendent's office. It's, um, for Sunderland, it's only an increase from twelve point six-two to fourteen point oh-one. Yet that equivocates to almost a twenty-five thousand dollar increase. It seems like a, it's only a one percent jump, one point.
But that, we, our expenses increased three percent.
Right, overall. So, the superintendent's.
It's not due to a salary increase, if that's what.
You know, actually, I was not thinking that. I just, I just kinda think why it was, you know, it just seems like a, a large jump for percentage-wise, a small percentage increase. The dollar amount is a large jump. I'm not sure how much the total superintendent's budget is, so.
I don't have that on the top of my head.
If it's four hundred thousand, and one percent increase is four thousand dollars.
Well, one percent, I mean, from, could, to go from twelve point something percent to fourteen percent, for us is a, like, fifteen percent increase in the cost to us.
To the town.
From twelve.
Right, our, our, our contribution.
No, I, I, it's a good, I, it's a good question, but it's, but I, but I mean, it's, but it's, right, it's different than a one percent increase in cost to us.
Right.
Right.
Except for.
Of our cost. It's a one percent of the total cost increase, but for us, that's like a fifteen percent increase.
It, it's part of that assessment function. Excuse me, participation in this, in this system, whether it is elementary or frontier, which we're gonna talk about here in a minute. You know, our percentages migrate with association, I'm sorry, with population increase and decrease. And that's, and that's how we end up, you know, one of the benefits of the five-year roll-in, roll-in, roll-out at frontier is very helpful because that noise is really dampened.
Right, and we don't do that with the union.
We don't do it with, with the.
It's a one-year reflection, so you're getting the, you're absorbing the hit in one year.
And, and the only thing that we have with the, the retirement, the only thing that we have similar to them is a tech school. And tech school is based on a year-to-year assessment for, per the number of students. So, we can, if we get three new students, our budget goes, what, a couple of years ago, went up, what, a hundred thousand dollars because we, and not that it's bad, it's just.
Enrollment.
So, there's nothing to moderate those swings.
And this year is down thirty-nine. And who's to say that next year is not three students plus?
And, 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 and we, and we try, and, and us, doing a budget, we try to wanna moderate those swings, but how do you do it?
Right. I think the, the agreement, the, with, in frontier has a mechanism that allows for that, but larger districts, I think, does not.
It's five-year, yeah, five-year averaging.
So, Franklin budget, we're going down like eight hundred thousand dollars on this? Yeah, yeah. That'd be nice, uh, but it's, it's not a reality. That's, that's using the percentages the other way. Exactly. Oh, it's good math, I like it. I like it. Slightly different districts, slightly different approach. I'd like to ask a question if I could of the school committee, now having attended the, uh, the budget hearing, uh, at the elementary school. Over the, in this last five years, we've been trying to get the school at or near programmatically, um, two thousand nine, two thousand ten, pre-two thousand nine, uh, are you feeling, both from the administration as well as the school committee, that we're, we're nearing that point? Not from a dollars and cents point of view, I mean, the environment, the kids, the instructors.
Programs.
Programs. Are we, are we getting awful close to that?
Um, I'd say we're, that we're, yeah.
Okay.
Absolutely. I think it's really solid right now.
Good.
Yeah, in a lot of ways. I think in everything that you're seeing, you know, in, you know, what we talked about before, that's, yeah.
Good, okay.
I don't feel like we're, you know, there's a program that we wish we had that we were, you know.
So, if you ask the school committee if there's a program that shouldn't be there or not there, is there, is there stuff that you would have?
That sh, that shouldn't be there?
Or, should, should, yeah, should or should not.
No. I disagree.
There's a couple of things.
You know, I think more language is just a, you know, I mean, but.
Probably always something you can.
I could, I could definitely name things that, that we still stretch then than we used to. Um, I think you can, I mean, in the numbers, I mean, we're still below, we're still well below where we were as a budget, and actually, our school numbers now are, are, uh, just a little bit below where we were, uh, before this happened, not. So, um, so, and, and, and all other expenses tend to go up a little bit every year, just they're the same. So, we're spending less, and I think that shows in some places, but overall, obviously, great things are.
It's very solid right now.
You know, and I can only speak, um.
I was hoping you'd pile in.
What, you know, since I've, uh, arrived at the end of September, and the quality of instruction and the education of the whole child that's going on in Sunderland's very impressive. And the teachers are working very hard, the instructional assistants are working very hard. We added Spanish in December. The teacher's phenomenal. Our specialists across the board are doing a great job. And, you know, I, I think one of the phenomenal things that Mr. Merritt brought to the school were a number of other programs. Like, you know, he started the Farm-to-Table Initiative, um, reaching out into the community. He started an IVECA presentation where, um, in December, we had a live broadcast with a middle school in South Korea. So, there's a lot of things going on at the elementary school. And, you know, obviously, with any organization, we're looking to continue to improve in some areas and, um, enhance others, and I think, I think we're doing a good job.
I, I, I guess for, for me, um, we, we in, in the town sometimes don't hear enough about the elementary school. If you don't have kids in the elementary school, you're not hearing about that. So, ma- maybe, and, and maybe if I could suggest a, FCAT, go, have a, once a month where the principal, school committee goes over and does a, a, a chat with FCAT about what's happening in, in the elementary school.
Can kids do, can, could little guys be there?
I, and I would say yes, and, and, and that's, and that, that's up to the.
New opportunities for programs.
I, I would, but to me.
To report what's going on.
You, you do so much, you do so much, okay? You, you do so much, you do so much, okay, and, and Margaret, we got a, we got something from the school, what, a couple of months ago, or, uh, a month ago, some type of mailing from the school. Remember that? Margaret's been on vacation.
I'm sure we did.
So, so, since, since she's on vacation, she's still living that.
Oh, stop, stop.
You know, that high life in Chicago of fourteen below zero, with a high temperature when she was there, so she's still on freezing. But, 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 but getting that, but getting that, getting that out, I think, is an important thing. And, and Ben's very photogenic, you know, and, 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 and maybe, maybe, and, and maybe work it, maybe working with Doug over at FCAT to, to do something like that, and, 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 you know, you, you, like, you have your plays and the musical things, um, outreach into the communities. And again, it's, it's all about, and I want to say the same thing to Frontier, because Frontier, you even have better stuff, the coffee, you know, the coffee house stuff, and, and the, the instrumentations and the plays. Those are all things that the community, if they went, you would be nothing but impressed with our young people.
I mean, we had our band concert and, um, strings the other, you know, a couple of weeks ago. It was phenomenal to see how many kids were participating, and it was full, like, arts night. I mean, it was, like, just full of people. It was so great. There, even little in the little classrooms, they do readers' theaters that the teachers put together, that each kid has a part. I mean, that kind of stuff would be phenomenal. Remember when they did the whole Betsy Ross, I mean, the stuff that goes on is unbelievable. Every day.
That's a great idea.
But, but those are the kind of thing, I think we, we just need to sell, we need to sell, and, and I think if our residents saw what was happening, they have questions, because they go, what, what does most of our, what do most of our residents see when they look at the school? They see cars parked in the parking lots. They, they don't see what's going on, and they do, when they see cars, they, they, they just think of people getting paid and the expenses, but they don't see what's happening with the kids.
You, you bring up a, a very good point, and just recently, we had International Night at Sunderland Elementary School, and it was put on by our school psychologist, Vicky Palmer. Um, we had approximately one hundred twenty different guests. Uh, it was potluck, so we had twelve, uh, twelve countries represented of meals, uh, throughout the world. And it ended with a, uh, performance, um, by a local artist, Abdu, Abdu Sar, who's from, uh, Senegal. And, uh, it was quite an impressive evening. And that's just, you know, one example of something that's happened at Sunderland.
It's not in the budget.
Right, get a hold of my.
None of it's done with Vicky, yeah.
Yep.
That's where FCAT can play in, and we can, not just, not to sell, I think, Tom, may, maybe, it's a, it's a word, but I mean, connect with the community at a broader, on a broader scale.
Absolutely, Scott.
Um, FCAT has an appointment with the board on March third. That'd be good, a good point of discussion.
There you go, FCAT. We just said that the rest of your year is worth of work. Don't tell Doug yet. Are there any questions with respect to Sunderland Elementary?
The only thing, can I bring up one thing?
Okay. Super, she's got rank.
No, I'm sorry.
She did?
When you asked about what we'd like, we haven't brought up any, um, expenses or budget items for technology for, for the next year. Um, and you will be seeing that the following year, because with the new tech team that we have,
Yep.
we are working really hard on, on streamlining platforms
Yep.
and having, uh, uniform platforms throughout the, the district. Um, and that takes time, and we are cognizant of tight budgets. Um, and we don't want to, um, suggest something until we know exactly what we're gonna need. We're still waiting for the mass broadband to come through. But that is an area that I would like to see emphasized for the following budget, is technology.
And if, if, if I could interrupt for one second, don't aim low.
You heard it here.
And, and again, and, and if you're, if you're gonna do something, don't, don't aim low. And, and if it means that you get tablets for our, every kindergarten, kindergartner that's entering kindergarten, so it's twenty, twenty-five, thirty, is that better than spending tech, money on technology that it, it's gonna be dated, and the kids are gonna fight, so they're not, they're not using it?
That's why we want to be very careful in what we purchase, that it's meaningful, um, because it does, it goes out. So, so I just wanted you to be aware, it's not in this budget.
Right.
But it will be forthcoming.
You're, you're in the assessing function this year.
They are, they are.
And, and I, and I, and I wouldn't, and I would talk to as many people as possible, and, and because the more people we talk about technology, the more ideas that they have. And, and, and unfortunately, um, the more people, the more people you listen, and David does this all the time, but the more people you listen to, the more, the more information that you have, the more, the better decisions that you can make. And we, we want that ourselves, that we might.
Oh, yeah. We're, we're in the same boat, so.
In fact, I know your technology team must, must be stretched, but I'd love to talk with you at some point about, you know, the, the little things that maybe we could, you know, tap their expertise, um, on, because we have no technology, um, expertise here whatsoever. And, um, so just knowing that that's there, and it would be great, just have a discussion sometime.
And we'd love to, Scott would, would be very happy to come over, you know, yeah.
That would be great.
And that's another opportunity there for bulk, to bulk things together.
Strategy, yeah.
Um, I, I was gonna ask that, but then when you mentioned that they're still working on that, I figured, because that, that, that's an area of keen interest for me too, so.
Yeah, because we have no resources. That would be wonderful.
Yeah, no, we can arrange that.
Good.
How about Frontier? Any other questions?
Well, now, a question about school choice. I find it interesting, I just want to make sure I'm correct on this, that when we increase from thirteen to fourteen, that's an increase of thirty-eight thousand dollars in school choice funds?
What page are you looking at?
From this report you sent around just now.
Put your hand out.
So the increase of, of seven students brings in thirty-eight thousand dollars?
Yes.
But because we're increasing our.
Thirty-five thousand.
Because we're increasing our, uh, elementary school population, we have to pay twenty-four thousand dollars to school, to superintendent's office.
Now, don't say to the superintendent.
The superintendent's office.
Office.
So two-thirds of it goes right to the superintendent's office. Interesting.
That's an interesting observation, actually. Is there a way in?
There's more money to be had in that school choice, you know.
I guess the question is, and we were kind of discussing on the side, is, and I guess we, we don't understand clearly, is, yeah, we're getting more money coming in because of school choice, but because more students are coming in, that increases the number of assistants, aides, instructors, so we're.
They pay for it, the other towns pay for the aides. If they have a child that comes into the town that needs an aide, that town pays for it.
Okay.
Which will.
I think that we should, we should recognize in the room that the five thousand dollars is only part of the cost to attend some of the elementary regardless.
Well, I was just.
Regardless, that's, that's, that's no elephant in the room, that's just math.
I was just gonna say, compare that to the cost of the charter school that we pay going out.
The question is, which one of you get idea, why is it better for us to have school choice?
Right.
That's the question.
Yeah, no, you're absolutely right.
You all, everybody else here says, yeah, this is a great idea, but for some of us, we're still, okay, there's expenses involved with it, and there's benefits involved with it.
Yeah, right, like, what's the net?
What's the net main benefits of school choice?
And honestly, I mean, it's, you know, to get to that precise, you can't put, it's hard to put a precise
Right.
on the space, but it's definitely situational. Uh, in some, in certain situations, it's more effective. So for, so for example, again, like, if we're at a point where, you know, we feel like we have to split, split a classroom, um, you know, just like we were talking about earlier, then to add school choice slots there, really, what's the additional expense at that point? Not a lot, I mean, some administrative, some, you know, like relative, you know, there, we can be fairly confident that's gonna be a net benefit. And that's typically the only place where we've looked to do it. We have, I mean, some districts, that's how they have classrooms. I mean, some schools, you know, it's, if they're gonna keep a school, they're trying, doing a lot of it through choice, and that hasn't been our mode, but we have used it where we're in a situation of, like, okay, we, do we, do we?
We didn't invent the business, but we're in it, you know what I mean?
And if we don't, and, and if we don't choice in, um, they can still choice out, still.
And the other.
So we lose, so we lose the money through choosing out.
Are we seeing this in the other, other elementary schools?
Everybody's asking the questions that you are, and, and for instance, um, twenty years ago, or whenever, I was originally principal in, in Sunderland, and school choice was just starting, and we had three or four students. We were still getting five thousand dollars per student, and we were getting that lovely little bonus. It was fifteen, eighteen, twenty thousand dollars, and we used it to buy extras, maybe a computer, you know, maybe a field trip. Um, if you had sixteen, seventeen kids in a class, and you had two or three who were school choice, it was great. It was additional revenue and no cost. You weren't adding a teacher. Then they became real numbers over time. And so what happened was, is our expenses in the operating side went up, you're increasing your school choice, you're looking at that revenue and saying, well, perhaps we should offset the bottom line of the budget. And so instead of supplementing and buying those little extras, it became really part of the budget. And now everybody's kind of to this point, where they've been doing school choice for a long time, you now have a number of students who are going out that you have to pay for. If you were to stop doing school choice now, you still have to maintain the kids that you have, you have a commitment to them. So it's a six-to-seven-year exit plan that you're still paying out. And you have to make that decision. Are we going to accept that additional cost for six to seven years and not accept any more students, knowing that it's going to impact and deplete your programs? So, but it is a question that everybody's asking.
I'm, I'm wondering if one way of getting at that net benefit or loss of school choice would be to take an extreme hypothetical and say, how much would it cost the town to choice out every single student? Would that be more or less than the budget?
Some districts do that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They're very small.
Do we have any idea of what that might be for Sunderland?
It would be, we have two hundred and five students.
And how much per student?
Five, five thousand.
Well, plus there's a special ed increment.
Then you have to stay, that's that increment.
But law can't do that.
Yeah.
Because your town has responsibility to provide a public education component, so you'd have to have a, a tuitioned.
Yeah, it's just details.
Yeah.
Well, this is just as a way of getting at the true cost of.
But you couldn't just say it's five thousand dollars per student, because
Yeah, of course.
districts up in the Molok district, they have a tuition agreement
Yeah.
with another.
Yeah, it's fascinating, 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 uh, hypothetical, that's for sure.
Yeah.
I, I just thought that was, I thank you Superintendent Barrett for bringing up the fact that we've had school choice for twenty years, and that five thousand dollar hasn't changed.
It hasn't changed.
That, that hasn't changed.
Right.
Although you have another funding mechanism for other schools as charter, that is paid at a, you know, eighteen thousand dollars a student. Well, if, if we got eighteen thousand dollars per student at Sunderland Elementary, we would have a lot of hot, happy, happy, very happy people.
It's managed every day.
So, so I don't, I don't, and, and I, and again, we sit here on a local level, always beating ourselves up, and we're, and we're not addressing, we're not really addressing the issue where it needs to be addressed.
I mean, it's really, I mean, you get, you get, and you know, Patty threw the, and, and Marty threw the DESEC filings every year. You know what cost of attendance is. Stroke of a pen, it would be a perfect world if it was school choice equals cost of attendance.
That gets back to discussions.
Really easy.
Well, the problem is, is that school choice is only, um, it, it's only big in Western Mass.
Right.
It's not big on the, on the eastern part of the state, because the towns are so close together, they have, you know, and most of them are, you know, some of them are more wealthy, and there, there's no school choice out there. So we don't have the political clout, as if it was a whole state saying, increase this five thousand dollars. It's because we have less political clout out here on the western end, that we'll never get that five thousand dollars changed, and then we, as we've used it, as we've supplemented it more to use operational, don't forget, our operations increase every year by teacher contract, instructional assistant contract, but that five thousand dollars remains hard.
Right.
So we've got no increase in revenue unless we increase students, but we've got increasing costs now being supported by it.
And Representative Kulik said a week or so ago that, when he's brought it up, people don't even want to talk about it, because it's not an issue.
And, and you can't talk about that, and you can't talk about regional transportation.
Right.
Right, right.
They're, they're non-starters. They don't even, they won't even, absolutely right.
Fascinating.
But, okay, when you look at, when you look at the things on the, on, on this, what are we doing? We're ta- we're taking students from Deerfield coming to Sunderland, Sunderland going to Deerfield, Whitley going to Deerfield, Sunderland, and, and we're, we're, we're eating our own.
I mean, some of that
It's, uh, absolutely.
quiets down, because they theoretically all go to Frontier, but, and I guess that begs, well, it brings up a lot of other questions too, is that, you know, I hate to say it, but do you look at, you know, you've got all this movement within what's ostensibly one district, well, that, to me, that brings up a lot of questions that aren't being asked. Maybe we just make it one. I mean, there's a lot of things to look at, and it gets back to conversations we've had, again, it's out of our immediate purview, but we maybe really need to take a hard look at how we fund education, but that's.
Yeah, we all know that, academic.
We do.
But. That's all right. Yeah, except. It's actually eight sixteen, we're gonna move on to Frontier.
Okay.
Thank you, Patty.
Thank you, Ben.
I wish you'd like to stay here.
You're not just, no way.
Same time, same place.
Exactly. Same bat channel, same bat time. It was nice meeting you.
Thanks, Ben.
All right, I appreciate, uh, I, I appreciate the, uh, description about the twenty-year arc as well. That's important to bear in mind.
But, uh, what about capital? I, I don't know if there's really anything, but I suppose that's something we're gonna think about too, is we have, what, a potential boiler replacement, and there's probably some other things.
Capital requests to be coming separately.
Do you want to talk about capital related all about?
I mean, it may not be part of this, maybe this is.
Not, not, not the budget at this point.
Right, no.
But was it, a capital request was gonna be submitted, uh, for, um, a set aside for a boiler replacement, right? You had a five-year plan for the boiler replacement, so you were gonna do that in conjunction with, um, the application for the feasibility study for renewable thermal energy. So, um, I don't know if you want to talk about the condition of the boilers at this point, but.
Well, no, that, that we've met, and that, you know, we're working on a plan right now.
I actually saw a, one of the renewable thermal energy, uh, system options is, is a pellet-fired system. And I saw my first bulk pellet truck last weekend on, on ninety-one. I'd never actually seen.
There you go.
Yeah. So they do exist.
Yeah, they do exist.
They're out there. Yeah, Rice does it.
Yeah, and so I saw, I saw Samory.
That's right, yeah.
Yeah. So that's in the works.
Yeah, we'll go.
No, I think they're coming back. Oh, she's going to get ready. Are we on to Frontier?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so, I'll just do an intro. Um, we are presenting an FY-15 operating budget in the amount of five million, seven hundred and forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars. This is an increase from this year of two hundred and eighty-two thousand or, um, thirty-seven dollars, or two point nine-eight percent. These numbers are not reflective of our debt or transportation budgets, which are presented and assessed separately. So Patty's gonna go through, once again, um, the detail and narrative of the Frontier budget.
Thank you, Marty. Um, okay, so we'll start again with our salary-related costs. And we have an increase in the cost of our contract adjustments and steps of a hundred and seventy-six thousand, seven hundred and fifty-one dollars, or one point eight-seven percent. Um, and that is the two percent teacher and instructional assistant increases. There's twenty-three stu- teachers moving on step at Frontier. There's thirteen instructional assistants on step. We have seven non-instructional staff on step. We have thirteen teachers receiving longevity payments, and nine non-instructional staff receiving longevity payments. We also have an increase in our teacher retirements of seventy thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five. Um, we did not have any teachers retire, uh, for FY-14, and in fifteen, we have four teachers totaling the seventy thousand, nine twenty-five. We have an increase in our contract adjustments of six thousand, seven dollars. Again, this is for our non-union staff. We've reduced one English teacher at sixty-nine thousand, five fourteen. This was done through attrition. And we've also reduced one special education teacher for forty-eight thousand, five eighty-two, again, through attrition. So our total salary changes equate to one point four-three percent increase, or one thirty-five, five eighty-seven. We do have operational increases. Um, our school committee expenses increased six thousand, fifty dollars. Um, this was, um, we, the MASC dues were not reflected in this line item previously, so we had to put them here, and it's, uh, used for members attending the MSC conference. And we also have had an increase in our legal fee utilization. Um, the increase for superintendent's office expenditures is twenty thousand, eight hundred and fifty-eight. The Frontier percentage increased from thirty-three point nine-three to thirty-four, twenty-five, and the overall expenses for the super, uh, and tenant's office have increased for the salaries and district network expenses. We needed to increase our educational supplies and materials by sixty-five hundred. Uh, general supplies, we increased five thousand for the increased cost of toners and inks. Uh, tech to education, five hundred dollars due to increase in the cost of shop materials. And our music department, we added thousand dollars. cost of shop materials. In our music department, we added thousand dollars for the added cost of materials and repairs for the strings program. We added the strings program, we never increased the budget. Again, we have here the increase for the professional stipends for the, uh, instructional assistants, which was a new contractual obligation. It amounts to four thousand, three fifty. There are twenty-nine instructional assistants at Frontier. Our school dues, um, we are experiencing increases in our school memberships that totals seventeen hundred and ninety-five. Our athletic costs are increasing seventy-five hundred dollars. Here it's due to, um, athletic transportation in the amount of six thousand. This is due to the new transportation contract that's gonna be starting. We had, uh, increases in both the trip and wait time fees. Uh, there's also an increase in league fees of five hundred dollars, which was adjusted in the FY fourteen. Uh, we experienced that this year. And a new expense, um, of a thousand dollars for concussion testing, which is required.
Can I just ask a question? Have athletic fees gone up in the past year?
Yes. They went up, we experienced, the league fees both, uh, what, what are the?
Not the athletic.
Oh, the athletic, the athlete fees, the, the fees to participate.
For us to participate in the, is it MIAA? Is that what, what, what's that?
Or the fees that the students pay.
No, no, it's the fees we pay to belong to the local, uh, high school organization.
But have student fees increased to offset these costs?
No.
Okay.
Um, we have an increase in the out of district tuitions of seven thousand, six hundred and eight dollars. Um, we have experienced four new placements since last budget, but we are able to maintain a less than one percent increase in this account, uh, due to the following. We had a, we were able to get a cost share agreement for one student with another town. We had a change of placement of one student, which is reduction in tuition. We had one student move out of state and three students that are moving from educational placement into work transition programs. Um, there are currently sixteen total students in these types of placements. We have an increase in our evals and other services of twenty thousand, five hundred dollars. Uh, this year, the special education population moving up from the sixth grade are students who are mainstreamed, uh, but they require special education supports for vision and hearing impairments. So the cost of these or supports are budgeted to this line item. We have an increase in our nursing supplies of seven hundred and seventy-five dollars, uh, mainly due to the, uh, EpiPen regulations and the need for more disposable supplies because of the medical needs of our student population. We have an increase in our buildings and grounds of fifty-eight thousand, nine oh two. We're increasing six thousand dollars in our custodial supplies and materials. Two thousand for athletic field maintenance, eight thousand for ground supplies and materials, and thirty thousand for contracted services for the maintenance of buildings, and seven thousand for building supplies. These are all accounts which we have historically underbudgeted and overspent. So, um, these increases are more reflective of the actual spending levels. Uh, we also have an increase of a thousand dollars in contracted services and grounds for the rental of Hurleyhe Field in Whately, um, and an increase in our water and sewer based on our current utilization in buildings. Our fixed charges are increasing thirty-eight thousand, seventy-seven. Um, this is mainly due to an increase in our health insurance of thirty-three thousand, three fifty-nine. Although we are experiencing a third year of zero increase in our health insurance premiums, we did have a five percent increase in our dental insurance premiums. Uh, the basis for the other part of the increase has been, uh, changes in employee plan selections and in the increase for the contractual stipends for those who do not choose our insurance plan, um, as well as less insurance dollars allocable to grants. Uh, the Franklin County retirement assessment increased seventy-seven, ninety-five or two point six percent. We also have a small increase in our Medicare tax of fifteen hundred dollars due to the change in the salaries. Our workers' comp insurance and other insurances should not change dramatically. We are forecasting a three percent increase in premiums of forty-six hundred and five dollars. Uh, there's also, uh, an increase of seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars for our athletic insurance, which we experienced this fiscal year. And lastly, we have been able to decrease our unemployment insurance by ten thousand dollars due to a decrease in our, um, based on our non-mutilization. So those total, um, the other operational increases total one point eight three percent of our budget. And then we have some small operational decreases. We changed out our postage machine lease that saved us fourteen hundred and sixty-five dollars. Uh, we're able to decrease our sped transportation twenty-five thousand. Um, this is due, uh, based on our two-year analy- analy- anal- oh my god, it's late. Analysis of utilization. And a very competitive bidding process for the sped transportation services. So, um, we can absorb this reduction and still have the contingency for new transports. So that totaled a negative point two eight percent, so our net change is two point nine eight. Um, then the following pages of that, um, are the detailed budget for Frontier. And then the next page is our, our funding sources by department. And then our analysis of school choice and charter. And our school choice students make up approximately twenty-one percent of our student population at Frontier. In FY thirteen, that brought in re- net revenue of two hundred and eighteen thousand, four hundred and twenty-four. That amount is projected to decrease thirty-five percent or seventy-five thousand, five seven seven. The reason for the decrease in the net revenue is due to increases in tuitions for outgoing school choice and charter students. Outgoing school choice tuition is increasing thirty-eight thousand, four eighteen, while charter tuition is increasing fifty-eight thousand, three thirty-five or a total of ninety-six thousand, seven hundred and fifty-three dollars. This is offset slightly with a projected increase in state charter aid of thirty-three thousand, nine eighty-two. We project this trend will continue into FY fifteen with net revenue decreasing to one twenty-one, four twenty-seven or an additional fifteen percent. So we're recommending the use of the funds for two instructional aides at thirty-nine thousand, nine forty-four and one point five FTE teachers at a cost of seventy-eight thousand, nine dollars. This will leave us at a balance in the fund of thirty-two, ninety-four. So if, if you can see, if you look at that, um, on that page eleven of thirteen, it says projected FY fifteen. We have the net, uh, at Frontier, we have the net, our charter, our outgoing with our ingoing. So it comes out to the net of one twenty-one, four twenty-seven. Circuit breaker, uh, and sped revolving. For fifteen, we are projecting circuit revenue, circuit breaker revenue in the amount of two hundred and seventy-eight thousand, nine eighty-six. Uh, that's a flat from what we received in FY fourteen. We're also projecting revenue of a hundred and thirteen thousand in the sped revolving accounts for out of district tuitions, for students tuitioned into the Frontier special ed programs. Our beginning balance is projected to be forty-four thousand, two hundred and four. And added to that is our FY revenue projection of three hundred and ninety-one thousand, nine eighty-six, which will give us available funds of four thirty-six, one ninety. So we're projecting to use that as follows. Uh, we have a special education nurse of thirty-three thousand, two hundred, four teachers at two hundred and fifty thousand, eight ninety-eight, and six point five instructional assistants at a cost of one thirty-two, five oh seven. These total four sixteen, six oh five, leaving us with a projected balance of nineteen, five eighty-five. So you can see in both accounts, we don't have a lot of money for contingency should, uh, a student need to go out of district or one comes through the door. Um, the page after the choice and charter revenue and cost is the source and use. As you can see, the town assessments make up sixty point sixty-seven percent of our total budget. School choice provides seven percent, seven point oh four percent. State and federal grants, two point three two percent. Circuit breaker, two point three four percent. Sped revolving, point nine five. Chapter seventy, twenty-three point sixteen. Um, there's no free cash, um, right now voted to, uh, go towards the assessment. The state reimbursement will be, uh, for regional transportation is at one point four point nine percent. School lunch at one point four three and athletic revolving at point six percent. And the, this, the next, um, was, is just a page showing our, the status of our excess and deficiency funds. Right now, we have a total of a hundred and eighty-four thousand, seven forty-two remaining for FY fourteen after we use seventy-four thousand, eight hundred and forty for our stabilization account.
Mark?
Very good question.
Pardon?
Yeah, I'm sorry you're done. I didn't, I didn't.
Well, I was gonna go into the assessment and, and enrollment information, but if you want to take a break here and ask questions about the budget, we can do that.
I was gonna ask about assessment and enrollment.
Keep going.
Keep going.
Okay.
Tom raises his hand.
All right. So the next section is the assessment and enrollment information. And the first page, we have the revenue analysis. Um, Frontier, like most of the Union Thirty-Eight schools, experienced only the twenty-five dollar per pupil increase in our chapter seventy, uh, which gives us fourteen thousand, four hundred dollars. And our regional transportation will go up twelve thousand, three hundred dollars. Uh, again, because right now the school committee has not taken a vote on the use of free cash, um, we are, so that gives us a negative revenue of a hundred and thirteen thousand, three hundred dollars.
Can I just ask, uh, a quick question on chapter seventy? Do you think the House two numbers will remain stable?
Yes.
Okay.
There's no indication. Uh, we are, I was at a conference earlier in the week and they did say that, uh, the, the, the next two budgets out, they, they think there'll be a, about a five percent increase in local aid, but they think that the educational will remain flat. We'll see what happens.
We'll see.
Right. We don't think it'll get worse.
That's good.
It could be good for you on your local aid side, but I also heard that that was earmarked for other things.
Right.
Well, yeah, so.
So it wasn't good to give you the honest.
We know that game.
Unfunded.
We love them. So the budget analysis, our assessment increases for each town, um, total four hundred and seven thousand, six hundred and thirty-seven or six point one nine percent. And Conway will take four point five three percent of that at forty-five thousand, six eighty-nine. Deerfield, six and a quarter percent at one ninety-two, three sixty-three. Sunderland, nine point three six percent increase of one fifty-two, three sixty-two. And Whately, one point nine nine percent or seventeen thousand, two twenty-three. Below that, we can look at the minimum contributions and you can see from one year to the next, it was just a net increase of eighteen seventy-nine. But Sunderland, as you can see, your, your minimum contribution has increased fifty-six thousand, nine ninety-four.
Of course. It happens, this one's our year, right?
Yes, unfortunately.
Did you enjoy last year?
Yeah, yeah. Oh, I, I was, I was actually thinking three years ago. We were like, what? Anyway.
Uh, so the next page again details the, the increase of six point one nine percent to the assessments. And below that, you can see the operating assessments are, are up six point one nine percent. But our debt assessment is down thirty-four point five eight percent. And our transportation assessment is down eighteen point three two percent. So our combined assessment is up only four point six two percent. And Sunderland nets a seven point two five percent increase with those other two decreases, uh, in both the transportation and, um, and, uh, debt. And this is the second to last year of debt assessment. So last, next year will be the last year.
Just gonna ask that question.
Unless we do a bonding for technology. Um, the next page.
We're gonna let that one out, but it's okay.
It's like I just slipped at it.
Everyone else said.
The page was the final Sunderland.
Oh, uh, it, it's, it's two of eight.
Two of eight?
Yes. And if you look at the Sunderland column down the bottom, it says seven point two five percent. Um, it's gonna go up a, a net of a hundred and twenty-four thousand, five oh one.
I feel better now.
So the next page is the calculation of the percentages for the FY fifteen assessments based on the five year enrollment. Uh, two thousand and thirteen, we, is the year we added and we have five hundred and one students. The year we dropped was two thousand and eight, which we had five hundred and ninety-three students. Again, you can see that, you know, not only is, you know, Sunderland did have a decrease between what dropped off and what added, but so did everyone else, you know? But then, and your, yours was a little bit more extreme than, than the rest of them. Um, the next page shows how, um, the operating assessment is calculated. So we start with the operating budget of ninety-seven, forty-seven, seven thirty. And we take out the chapter seventy-eight of two seven, five eight, four four five, leaving us, um, the amount to be assessed of six million, nine eighty-nine, two eighty-five. From that, we subtract the local minimum contributions. Zofer Conway, that's seven fifty-two, fifty-seven. Deerfield, two, twenty-two, thirty-nine, sixty-four. Sunderland, one million, two oh seven, two four four. And Whately, five fifty-nine, eight twenty-four for a total of forty-seven, fifty-two, eighty-nine. Once we subtract that from the six point nine above, we are left with the amount assessed over net school spending at two million, two thirty-eight, nine ninety-six. And that's where your percentage then plays in. So Sunderland will take twenty-five point six one percent of that or five seventy-three, four oh seven. When you add that to the local contribution of one point two million, you're left with a total assessment of one million, seven hundred and eighty, six hundred and fifty-one dollars. Now that is under the, the assessment under ed reform. If we were back in the days of the original agreement, you would be at one seven, eighty-nine, nine fifty-six. So technically, you're still on the bright side of things because you're saving ninety-three oh five.
Whately's really making out, we need to go after Whately. Where's that Don Scott when you need him?
Well, they have no children.
He would never, he would never had, he would never have shown this.
They have no kids, exactly.
He would never have shown this number. Where is that Don Scott when you need him?
I'm from oil.
I don't, Patty don't care, but.
I do care. I just.
Don would never show this. We would never, we would never have seen this.
I care, I just don't have any vested interests.
Right, right. We would never have seen this number if Don was here.
Uh, so now, the next page is from DESI, the D E S E. It's the analysis of our, the foundation enrollment from fourteen to fifteen for all four towns and then the required minimum contributions. So you can see in the district, we had a net change of plus one. Uh, and the local contribution changed, uh, totaled between all four towns of eighteen hundred and seventy-nine dollars. So that did not move that much. Uh, the next page you saw in the Frontier, in the Sunderland budget, and it's just the comparisons of all the percentages. And then the last two pages is the analysis of the charter and choice for Frontier. So right now, um, in two thousand and thirteen for charter, we had thirty-one students outgoing. And we're down to thirty in, in two thousand and fourteen. You can see eight of those students are from Sunderland. And on the side here, we break it, it breaks it down by grade. So there's ten at grade seven, four at grade eight, five at grade nine, three at grade ten, six at grade eleven, and two at twelve. School choice outgoing, uh, the end of last year, June, we had forty-two outgoing. This year, we have forty-four. Uh, mainly going out to Hatfield and Amers Pelham. And as you can see, Sunderland there has seventeen. So of, of both charter and choice, Sunderland's got twenty-five kids going out at the, at the seven through twelve level. Um, the next page is the school choice incoming. Uh, last year, we had a hundred and thirty. Uh, as of December, we're down to one twenty-seven. And, um, mainly, we're drawing from Gil Montague in Greenfield.
Gil?
Yes. And, uh, the grade level breakdown is on your right. And that is all I have to present. If I can entertain questions.
So maybe a more, um, strategic question as opposed to a budgetary question. This is the third year in a row the choice charter numbers moving frankly against, against the grain, if you will. And that's, I'm sure not a reflection of, of the school in and of itself, but is there a strategy to change that? As we talked of choice in the last discussion, here's the other side of the fence. That's a trend line, you're not positive, but.
Here, here's a, a dilemma.
Yes.
Um, two years ago, three years ago, we went from three middle school teams because of budget problems to two.
Yep.
Which has capped our capacity for bringing in seventh and eighth grade students. Which is, if you're going to have new incoming students, those are the grades you're gonna have.
Yep.
I know Darius has gotten more applications for it than he's been able to fill because we now have teachers who are having, class, class sizes are relatively small, but they're having class loads on a hundred and five to a hundred and ten students.
It's correct. So last year in grade seven alone, I think we turned away probably half a dozen to ten students because we've capped out the seventh grade classes. And you have to remember, we don't get a lot of, a lot of the school choice, we get, it comes through. So it's not like everybody all of a sudden shows up. Sometimes when you look at a number, you think they're all just seven K, but they're coming from all, they're coming from here, and they're coming from everywhere else. And so that becomes the dilemma. And so, you know, do you put more money, you know, we have solutions to increase the, you know, the bandwidth of the, of the middle school, but you would require investing money. So now you're investing money in the school choice, which goes against the whole.
It, it's, it is a double edged sword because, you know.
The elementary school discussion.
Right.
And here we are, same group, same night, same room.
Yeah.
The other side of the sword.
Right. And Darius did a presentation, was that just last night? Frontier, Frontier.
It had so many meetings.
It's like, tis the season.
We don't know where we are, what night.
To the Frontier.
Welcome to Sunderland.
To the Frontier School Committee, that in the last, what, three years? Last five years.
Last five years, we've cut ten positions and added one point three.
So, yeah.
So, you know, so you see the drop, we are. You know, so you see the drop, but we are reducing staff at the same time.
Right.
Um, to match that.
And now we're at this conundrum.
Well, it goes back to Mark's question, Mark and.
Oh, you want me to ask the question now?
No, no, no. It goes back to your question of, and, and, uh, the question that was asked earlier about school choice, about is school choice worth it plus or minus? And, and, and right now, so you eliminated a team, right? So typically that you probably, that was at least, you eliminated two, probably at least two teachers.
Three, four.
Okay. So four teachers, average salary fifty thousand, two hundred thousand dollars, right?
Correct.
And a team would have thirty kids on it, twenty five?
Twenty two, twenty three.
A team at five dollars.
Team is.
Yeah, a team would have seventy five to eighty.
But think about what you'd have to add
to do that.
To get four more teachers, to add more school choice, you'd have to have a.
That's to do with that model.
Right.
We have a different model. We have a different model now. We could change with a new model. There's a way, I have ideas. Uh, but at the same time, when you start to talk about how big, then what is, you know, right now I worry about the cap being at a hundred and five to a hundred and ten. You know, that's about the size class we have that comes in, um, based on the sending, the original sending numbers, we always lose some. Yeah. Based on those numbers, I also worry about, you know, how we have it set up now because I have a science teacher with a hundred and five to a hundred and ten students. The next year's sending class, if we do well in recruiting, could be slightly larger. And so then, you know, how do I make sure that the overall class load for that teacher isn't in the hundreds, isn't in the low hundreds? We want to keep that low because, you know, same thing with history teaching. If I have writing across the curriculum, which we do, you know, and, you know, we're doing argument writing in, in eighth grade, which is the, you know, is part of the social studies curriculum. How many papers can you correct? How many, you know, and so, and, and you know, so you, it starts, you have, you start having, start working, talking about quality of the education. So, yeah, yeah, it's, it's a good question. Then you start, if you talk about re- eliminating school choice, then, okay, then we reduce the size of our school down to something like our neighbor, you know, Hatfield, you know, and so then you start looking at what are our course offerings? You know, and then, then also we're gonna lose even more because what are the course offerings that you can offer in a smaller school, the variety of classes, those kind of thing? The diversity of students, you know, that kind of thing. And that's why we get actually a lot of school choice from the smaller schools. Because they say, you know, Frontier's big.
Right.
Technically, they're not really that big, but, you know, that kind of thing. And so it's.
And Hatfield coincidentally is the third largest sending town
Right.
of, of the towns out there.
Is that interesting?
And the other thing too, that I just want to clarify, if you're looking at those numbers, when we're saying we can't take school choice at seventh and eighth grade, what, but if you look at what we're receiving, there's fifty four kids in seventh and eighth grade, but those are the ones that are coming up from the elementary school.
Sixes.
Right. Because if you're accepted at the K to six, you're automatically going up. So of a hundred and twenty seven kids that we have, fifty four of them are in the seventh and eighth grade. That's a big chunk that we already have that are coming up from the elementary.
And we would have reached that in, increase, um, of a hundred and thirty had we been allowed. Not allowed, had we had the capacity to take those additional students.
It's a, it's a, it's a, I applaud the effort to think it through because, you know, reacting to it, that's the worst possible situation. You know, we have, uh, neighbors to the north that are just gonna be finishing probably next year, brand spanking new high school. I see the, you know, the incoming is headed down from that particular community. Whether it's programs or buildings, there's always, there's always a novelty bump.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so here comes the pressure.
Right.
Interesting.
And it's interesting, I wish kind of along lines with what we're saying, all the effort and thought put into it, I wish this received as much, and not to short foot the subject, the other subject, but I wish this received as much coverage in the press as like the EMS and other things. Because this is an ongoing.
Oh, this is big.
Yeah, and, 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 and you illustrate, you know, it's not, it's not a simple black and white. You know, a, a, and yeah, it's.
It's not. And I can tell you district wide, we do have subcommittees out there working with, with Coolic, you know, working with the town reps. Trying to keep the conversation going to see if there's another way to look at all of this.
Right. Great points. Mark, you want to weigh in?
Just a couple of questions, but this is a general question. If you could, if you could give me a quick answer. Why do charter schools get the ten, fifteen, twenty thousand and the school choice is only five thousand?
Better lobbyists.
Well, that's, I was running the exact same thing because.
Seriously?
Yeah.
That's really the answer.
Is that the answer?
That's really the answer.
Right, because I, I found, when we were discussing that earlier, I found myself sitting here thinking, well, are the charter schools really working with the same financial numbers? And how would they operate if they had to work with the same numbers that we have to work with? And it seems to me that one of the whole things was about charter schools as well. We can, we can do a better job with the resources that you have. Well, I think they're working with more resources. So is that really a fair comparison?
And then let's remember that if you're certain disabilities, we can't serve at our school.
Exactly, right.
We have to stay.
You're saddled with other issues that you have to deal with.
We're a much more homogeneous population.
For interest rate when they build?
Hmm, zero.
Okay, so you raised a question. So my second question is, does someone get punished percentage wise because we have so many people who are school choice and, and going to charter schools? Does that affect?
No.
At all, okay.
No.
Well, because the district, Mark, actually you could say the district is picking up an unfair, an unfair share of our kids going to charter schools.
Right, I just.
You, if you were in Whately or Deerfield or Conway, you could.
Right.
And again, we, un, you know, the thing is, I, I think.
It's, it's a good question.
Frontier, Frontier is way past, I think, way past looking at one town another because a few years ago Conway was the, the leader, the leading town sending kids to charter schools.
Mm-hmm.
So. And, and, and we, and we got the date. I mean, you can go back and look at it, so.
And if everyone's kind of a joke, I definitely demand you stop mailing stuff to us and I'll save about five hundred bucks. Just email it.
This was the, this, I, this might have been the first year.
That's right.
This, yes, this might have been the first year that we actually received the budgets by email. That's how we got them. We do not get giant binders filled with.
The cost sponsors keep getting sent a run in mail box. That's the finance committee.
Yeah, I was definitely excited not to see the single sided color coded binder.
You know, but the biggest problem that we have, and, and, and you, and you've heard, you've heard our revenue spiel, gave it earlier. I mean, our, our total, I mean, just rough, is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars increase. And you're gonna hear the same thing from Deerfield, and I'm sure you.
We have.
This year you won't hear from Whately, but you may hear from Conway too.
Yeah.
Well, Conway's in a much better position than they were last year, so I'm hoping that they'll be.
We presented in the nicest manner, you know, it's just the way it is. We have common challenges.
Yeah, and, and, but when you look at what our, our, our maximum, I mean, that's what the, the money, I mean, we can't change what our revenue is. So you have to look at how, how do you get it? And, and that's a hard, and you know, that's a hard.
Well, we don't have a voted budget by the committee yet. Now, this is our first conversation with you all, so I'm expecting that we'll have continued conversations and.
So, so had you see, you were talking about Sunderland elements, you, you may have some cost concerns. You see that same thing at Frontier? Or is a butter, is a budget running better for you this year?
Yeah, I think Frontier's.
The Frontier, what concerns me at Frontier, um, as it does in most of the elementaries, is that the amount of money needed for the repairs and maintenance has not grown over, in, in proportion to the age of the building. So we started out with these brand new buildings and nobody budgeted anything for repairs and maintenance because everything was brand spanking. Now, every year we should have adjusted for the age of the building and increased our maintenance budgets and we haven't. And now we're at a point where we have a lot of things in disrepair and we don't have the money to fix them.
I was gonna ask.
And we did the same thing with our, our wastewater treatment plant about ten, twelve years ago. We saw the same thing. We did not really have a line item for maintenance.
Right.
And we put a maintenance line item of twenty thousand dollars or fifteen or ten, whatever was at the time. But we didn't have a, we did not have a number there.
Mm-hmm. So we've been trying, like this year we tried to shore up some of those maintenance accounts by increasing them by about fifty eight thousand, but that's still nowhere near. I think the other area that we're all, as, as Marty had indicated, that not, just Frontier as well as the four elementaries, is the technology. We've got some huge requirements coming down the pipe on the park assessment that we're all able to take that online. And that's gonna require, you know, a lot more, um, investment on our part to get ready for that. In both bandwidth and in, in, in desktops or whatever device that we use to, to take that test.
Isn't that, what, what, don't we kind of need to look at especially technology as more of an ongoing operating cost? Because you look at, like we were talking about, like, I, maybe like looking at, uh, borrowing for items, like definitely for like, you know, a new roof or something like that. I have to wonder like technology, because the life cycle is so short on it.
Right.
You know, it, it's one of those things you have to wonder like, is borrowing a good way to do that? You know what I mean? But, and it's one of these things that it's gonna be, it needs to be more of the ongoing thing and, and it does change and there's a lot of. And we're, we run at the exact same situation here on the municipal level because, uh, we're in, as you can see from Margaret's PC, that we're in, you know.
What? I almost knew.
We're, we're nothing but. But, you know, we run into the, the same boat. We had a technology audit done and everything and.
We're gonna have that done, have to have that done because we are.
And.
Most districts are moving in the direction of leasing and, and re-finishing every three years.
That's one of the things I was gonna mention.
One of the things you're gonna see is even if you look at our textbook line now, most of that money is not spent on textbooks, it's spent on curriculum softwares. You know, so you're gonna see that change i- 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 in, instead of textbooks, we're gonna be buying computers, we're gonna be buying softwares.
Right, and you, you've got, you know, you look at a lot of textbook, like if you're looking at tablets, for instance, so saying you're buying iPads. A lot of the textbook stuff is shifting now over to iBooks. And from an educational standpoint, it offers a fantastic array rather than just thumping a book down to the student's desk. I mean, the, the, the immersion and the things that you can do with that is gonna be very good.
I think you brought up a good point regarding the, just doing sudden bumps in technology versus funding all along. And I think you, we are looking at that, but there may be a need a sudden bump because you talked about all these tablets and such. Okay, now we gotta wireless the whole building. Which they cement steel structure, which doesn't like, it's like fighting us to be wireless.
Exactly.
You know, and then, you know, then you have to have the servers, you know, we have the mass broadband coming, we gotta do the connecting of that. And then we realize we could, we connect the mass broadband in and we, the lines in the building, it's like, you know, taking a, you know, an eight inch pipe and putting it in two and a half inch pipe, you know, we're talking about water. So now you gotta put those new lines in. So all these, all, so there is some sudden costs who all of a sudden, you know, that you're gonna have.
You have those occasional big.
We do. We were trying to do it out of the budget, step by step along the way, but we, every time we take one step, it's taking three steps.
That's tough.
No, just like what Darius was saying, it's one step forward, three steps back.
Right, then you gotta run against change.
And I'm also thinking in terms of, um, along the lines of cost sharing that we discussed earlier, uh, tonight. I wonder if this technology with, with you guys getting the, the broadband connection, if that isn't something that maybe the library would be interested in sharing space? Because that's currently, I think, the only public access computers we have. And I think, you know, to get people access to the.
One part of that plan, it was, they were.
Were they included in that?
I thought there was just the schools.
CW Mars, um.
Yes, I, the, yes.
They're getting.
I, I.
Did they get a connection drop from the broadband library? I don't know.
I didn't, for some reason I didn't think they were.
I could be wrong, but I thought libraries were included in those drops.
Yeah, I thought it was like library, schools and municipal.
Right.
Library is included. Yeah, we had four buildings done in library. It would be library, town office, building, public safety and the school.
But that's where like the leasing thing, and that's where I could see some scaling, uh, above, not only bundling the schools, but the, the, the towns together. And, you know, maybe we can all get more bang for our buck that way.
Right.
Questions?
Mark, while we have principal superintendent, um, Deerfield's has been talking about, um, a resource officer potentially for Frontier. Have you guys had, if, if certain things go through, um, have you had a discussion about that internally yet about how that, how you guys would integrate it? And you don't really have to answer yes or no, but can I just ask if you have that conversation or if that money's presented to you? Could you talk to the town to see what the town feels about that also? So it's not just, so if somebody gave you money for a resource officer, could you ask the towns, all the towns, what their opinions are?
Sure. I, I'm, I can tell you my personal. We're a low incidence district and Frontier is a low incidence school. Um, and the success of a resource officer is totally dependent upon the person who fills that position.
Absolutely.
So when I was principal there, I did not see a need for, I'm not principal there now, so.
We have not had any formal or even informal conversations regarding the, the resource officer. You know, we talk, I talk when I work with local police. You know, I try to make sure the building is accessible as possible because they, it's part of the community and the kids should be able to approach police officers. Every time they enter the building, they should not be lighting up the, the, the texting internet that there's a police officer in the building. But, so, you know, I hear what you're saying, um, you know, do, am I, am I looking for grants because I need to get an asset ability for safety reasons?
And, and for, and, and I, and the way I say that is because Franklin County Tech is talking about a resource officer, but they never came and, they never talked to us. They never talked to us. They, they really haven't reached out to the communities and asked the communities what, what their visions of that are, are also. And, and I, I don't, I, I, and again, to me it's all about communications to let people participate in a communication. We may, they may not agree with the community or each community may not agree, but it's still having that conversation, so.
Right.
And, and I, and I would say the same thing for the resource, if a resource, you know, because theirs was being tied to money that may come in from medical marijuana.
Time for the medical marijuana, because I read that in the paper probably when you did, so that's.
And, and well, but we had, I had conversations with one of the selectmen and, and I, and I think it's a well-founded idea. It's just we, again, we're all, we're all partners at Frontier. I understand what they're doing. Actually, what they're doing is trying to do much better for the entire school, but I just, it'd be nice just to have that conversation about what that resource officer should be and how it should.
Well, I would say exactly what would be the, you know, um, the planning of that. The only guy I've heard is exactly, there may be a resource officer connected to American marijuana. That's about as much as I've heard, you know. I think it takes some planning and how you're gonna, what's the purpose?
Yeah.
The resource officer is not just a police officer standing in a building. You gotta have more to it there, you know, um.
Yeah.
At least if it's done well. I've been in, I've been in a building where it was done.
And I, and, and again, for me, I thought it was a good idea. I, I mean, I think it's a, a good idea we should talk about, but we should talk about it.
Yeah.
That's it. Mark?
I have a question on page, um, two of twelve on the proposed budget. Maybe I'm just missing something under the central office administration. The salary, I mean, I'm not picking on you, Marty, I just.
I know, Mark.
Forty five thousand eight ninety five proposed for superintendent salary. Are they taking a pay?
That's the regional district portion.
Yeah, that's the regional district portion. That's how much Frontier supports.
Than the other towns, the elementary schools.
Okay, sorry, I forgot the question. Okay, thanks. I wanna revisit the point about the quality of the information. I wanna thank the administration and, and Patty again, and Darius to the extent that you weighed in on it.
It's the first time you've seen it this way. It's the first year I've been principal unless we can.
Of all time, of all time, it'll be spoken to later.
Yes, it's true.
By these two.
Yeah, yeah, we call it tomorrow in the snow.
I've had any question ever once I was principal.
Sorry, Darius, you suck up all the credit.
Never to the superintendent's office.
Never been to the superintendent's office. Your name's still on that wall in there, you know.
It is on the.
But I, I do wanna thank you for that. And it, it has been, you know, two plus full hours going over a wider range of subjects than just the budget. I think a larger, a larger bit of the visioning, some of the pressures the schools in particular are under and how, how it's being handled. It's all been really helpful in the discussion. And if, if there's not anything else that's new to cover, I wanna go home. I don't know the way to put it.
We are in agreement.
Okay, so that, that said, I really do appreciate the conversation, the quality of it, but also the, the, the tenor.
We do too. I, I, I appreciate this. I hope that the open dialogue and two-way conversations can continue, so. Because there may be some tough decisions we all have to make together.
I, I agree with that sentiment completely. So thanks again so much. Finance committee, thanks again so much. FCAT, count us out. Motion to adjourn?
Motion. Is there a second? Just maybe second. All is in favor?
I'll take it.